Call this evening's meeting of planning commissioners to order. First item of my business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Are elected to please stand. The flag, Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. If there is a role for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, in the great interest of all.
The roll, sorry. Commissioner hidden. Commissioner Witzke. Commissioner Davis. Commissioner Frankenbach.
Mr. Love is at E Z here by around five o'clock.
All right, we have quorum, so move on. Any announcements, Mr. Dr. Bell?
I do not have any.
So the agenda, which is the regular events of May 6, 2025. I had one correction or one addition. It says we approved, we approved the, I don't have it, but approved the already recommended to keep the structural ordinance. It should be abped software. Abped software. Any other changes, additions, corrections, modifications? Hearing none, and consent agenda is approved. No public comment.
Afternoon, Dave Bowman, Bonner County. I came prepared to talk on the suggested revisions to the appeal process, and I see that it got back away from what was presented at the update meeting. So after having done some work on homework, going to do that now, so that's good. I just want to speak to the MLDs briefly. I think I've already said this, and I'm not the most knowledgeable person in the room by far, but I think option one is the only way to go, and it is because of the past history and all the attempts that have been made to try to craft, and I've been involved in trying to craft code language to try to get elected officials to do the right thing. And frankly, now you have a thing with elected officials who have appointed bureaucrats who may or may not be qualified to do the job, or may not, may or may not have their hearts in the right place. And with the cronyism that has been shown to happen, even, you know, right now, we have a good board, and that stuff hopefully isn't happening, but it's happened plenty in the past, and I do not think that you can craft language tight enough with minor land divisions to prevent it, and I take it it's been away with. I did not read all the examples from other counties yet, I will, but I know there was talk of some, you know, patterning after what's been done in Coopie County, and good Lord, go look at Coopie County, and do we want to become what they are. So I would ask you to go for option one.
Okay. Dave. Sir. So is your objection the administrative approval? You refer to a bureaucrat.
Yeah, primarily, yeah, yeah.
How does a short flat solve that?
I don't know that it does, except as I understand, and this is not my area, it's not my wheelhouse really, but the standard at least is higher in the short flat, is it not, I believe? It has to be met.
So there's two issues. One, there's the standards.
Right.
The approval process.
Understood.
I'm just trying to understand.
Well, fair question.
I thought it was.
It's, it's, it is a combination then, I guess, of the administrative approval and the lesser fair.
Fair enough. Can I call this on there?
Karen Kelly, Bonner County resident. Do we have people on Zoom here?
Yeah.
I just didn't want you to miss any public comment. Okay, I didn't write any more emails today. 12660 Minor Land Division Procedure. The purpose of it is to ensure that land divisions comply with the applicable zoning regulations to establish a ministerial review of all land divisions and to expedite the process for these small divisions of land that conform to the existing zone regulations in which the division lives. You guys know that. But ministerial review, to me, what I could look up, refers to a streamlined approval process where projects' compliance with predefined effective standards is assessed by a local government staff member without the need for discretionary judgment or public hearing. So Bonner County adopted this process back in 2016, from what I can tell, and tried many times to fix it, but we know today, all of us know, that loopholes still exist. The results from adopting this MLD process are in, and the Planning Department went so far as to ask for a moratorium. Your recommendation today, I feel, needs to try to do what's best for all residents of Bonner County, and I support option one because it seems to restore agency notifications, public notice, and standard reviews. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Afternoon, James Iffries River, resident. First, I'm not a developer. I've never done an MLD or subdivision. It's often the innocent that end up paying with restrictions on their rights for the misdeeds of a very small minority. Government overreach is very often done based on appeals to safety or preserving our rural environment. Based on the memo of March 25, the Planning Department seems to be using the excuse of safety, and the residents in support of the moratorium and restrictions are using the excuse of maintaining our rural environment. An inconsistency of motives, but both want to restrict my rights. As to the safety issue, has the Planning Department quantified and published all known instances where a lack of infrastructure, fire safety, and emergency response, to quote the memo, was caused by an MLD and resulted in harm to the county or another resident? Were loopholes exploited, or was it just a lack of enforcement of existing rules? What actions were taken to rectify those situations? As for the other emotional appeal to maintain our rural environment, many residents moved here to escape the regulation-riddled local regimes that they immigrated from, and they now want to restrict their Bonner County neighbors by making appeals to commissioners. We've witnessed continual howls coming from this vocal constituency, including those associated with so-called conservation groups whose stated mission is to take lands out of human use forever. It appears the constant drumbeat to maintain our rural environment is the real impetus for the moratorium and restrictions with safety used as the official cover story. Meanwhile, our kids can't afford to live here partly because of my fellow boomers who have secured their parcels and want to restrict what others can do with theirs. We need to show some grace to those who come after us. A few specific comments on options two or three. Obviously, I'm not in favor of option one. You can only get one rule via a deep notation or plot restriction amounts to an unfair cloud on title in the face of a perfectly valid minor land description. Second one, requiring a new and expensive survey for every minor land division is an unfair blanket requirement that ignores that many parcels have already been recently licensed, staked, surveyed, and have not had changes in 50 or 100 years. Yet somebody has to go out and pay a licensed surveyor when they have a licensed survey and there's been no changes in decades on that parcel. In closing, I'd like to ask this group, who I think has otherwise done a great job on this, to resist the urge to restrict our property rights and punish the innocent based on these somewhat vague appeals of safety or keeping our county rural. Thank you.
Linda, we're a Bonner County resident. I don't have anything prepared. I am a homeowner here in Bonner County, and I do stand here as someone who was harmed by an MLD division, and I can go into more detail for that if you would like, but I would urge you to vote in favor of option one. I am not as savvy as everybody else here, but I do not see, other than saving money, the purpose of the MLD. There are a lot of other options that the county could, with this short flat, there's already a family exemption. I'm sure everybody has the best intentions, and that's great, but we do live in an imperfect world, and there's a natural inclination for people, inclination for people to cut corners, and Bonner County is currently left with having to unravel a lot of the harm that's being done, that's been done from previous MLDs that were done incorrectly. It puts a temptation out there, and there are other avenues. Bonner County could choose to provide different options for people to maybe meet the short flat purpose in a more cost-effective manner, but I am definitely opposed to the MLD continuing on. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Linda, is that your name, Linda?
Yes.
I have a question for you. You mentioned that you were harmed. Yeah, in what way? I mean, I don't have to get too.
So I own a property in Mountain Homestead, one, and we have septic that's failing. That was never properly put together. We have a number of different issues. There's been a notice of torts to Bonner County, as you're aware.
Please, correct me if I'm wrong, perhaps staff can answer this question, but on an MLD, we don't require, that would be a Panhandle Health district.
Well, there's more than that. So we have basically what turned out to about 10 lots through two consecutive MLDs, which it's very difficult to understand the math of how that actually came about, but it did. It's been a process of about two years trying to unravel it to find out what's actually happened. So we're.
Okay. This is a workshop, so it's not a hearing. We can pick around a lot of ideas, some of which you might like and some of which you may not like, but I guess. How many have looked at the Planning Department's option one, option two? Pretty much. All right, so in your comments, I know several have already addressed that, but if you could address what you like or dislike about any of those three options. That would be helpful to this.
Thanks. My name is Susan Drumheller, Lady Segal, and I wanted to just share with you, and I haven't read in detail the various options, but I understand option one is basically to eliminate the minor land divisions and eliminate the short flats, which is the way it used to be, right? Am I correct in that?
Option one eliminates the.
Okay, okay. So yes, I'm in favor of option one, and I wanted to share some information from a letter that we just sent to the county commissioners today, and this is the issue, this addresses, I mean, I think there's a lot of problems with MLDs, and frankly, we've been trying to get them improved or eliminated since we formed in 2016 after they were created. But the Local Land Use Planning Act provides for judicial review and approval and denial of subdivisions. And back when Clagstone Ranch was approved, which was multiple, multiple MLDs all at once, we tried to help the neighbors appeal that, and it turned out to be very difficult. And so I think the issue I want to talk about is the lack of transparency and accountability that this administrative process creates, and what it's also created is the vast majority of land divisions in this county since minor land divisions were established in 2016. So I think it creates a real issue. I mean, I've just spent a lot of time, a couple of years, working on the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, and there's goals and objectives that, I mean, it's kind of hard to make sure that those things are being supported, when most of the land divisions in this county are being created through a process that there's no, there's really no light on it. There's no, there's no noticing to neighbors. There's no opportunity for people to weigh in until it's too late. And it turns out, we spent $1,625 to try to get a motion to reconsider hearing on seven different minor land divisions, all contiguous in the Clagstone Ranch area back in 2021. But it's since come to light that there is no opportunity for judicial review. So Bonner County testified that it deliberately created a process that was not subject to the Local Land Use Planning Act, and that process is the minor land division. And the county argued in 2023 in a district court hearing for a case that I think has to do with the case up at Crease Lake in Kulin, that MLDs are not subject to judicial review required in LUPA. And so on the basis of this argument, Bonner County won the case. That's now going before the Supreme Court. And over the years, the county's accepted numerous fees from applicants seeking review of MLDs under LUPA. And at first, when we filed our first, on behalf of the neighbors and neighbors and Project 7B, filed a motion to reconsider three MLDs, we got charged $325 for that. That was the fee for getting a motion, you know, requesting a motion to reconsider a decision, and that was made in the consent agenda. There's no discussion, just boom, you know, three contiguous MLDs were approved all at once, and we didn't even know they'd been approved when they were approved, because you have 10 days to appeal an administrative decision, but there's no notice of it. So the only, the first time we knew these had been approved was when it went to commissioners on the business agenda and was approved on the consent agenda. Then we had two weeks to challenge it. The next week, they approved four more. So we filed another, you know, within three weeks, we filed two motions to reconsider seven minor land divisions. At that point, the county had 60 days under Bonner County Code to respond to us, and if they didn't respond, presumably, we had the opportunity to take it to court. They never responded. They never gave us a hearing. We paid $1,625 to try to appeal, to try to get just a hearing, to hear the issues with these seven minor land divisions, which was just, it wasn't even all of them, because they did an entire section, pretty much, a mile, square mile of minor land divisions at Clagstone Ranch, and people were pretty upset about it. Two years before, the year before, the county rezoned that area, I think from 20s to 5s, and the neighbors had a hearing then, and they all turned out and were like, no, 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 we don't want this. But it was approved, and then boom, all these minor land divisions were approved, and there were issues with them. There were landlocked parcels, there was not adequate access, there wasn't legal access to the original parcel, and I imagine there's still issues out there. So at any rate, that's kind of the history of that. I think that the point of this is the short flat process allows for transparency and accountability, and it doesn't have overly onerous requirements for developers. There's no requirement for a hearing, but people do get noticed, the neighbors get noticed, and they have an opportunity to provide information about what's going on there and what the local situation is. And Bonner County used this process for decades, till 2016. So there's no, there's no, what do I want to say? There's no right to a minor land division. This was a choice that Bonner County made back in 2016, and since then, there's been multiple attempts to try to fix the code. The fact of the matter is, it doesn't exist under LUPA, it doesn't exist under subdivision code, there's no opportunity for the public to really have any meaningful opportunity to appeal. So at any rate, I would really urge you just to, you know, if you want to amend something, look at the short flats, you know, get rid of MLDs, wrap it back into short flats, and perhaps there's a way, if there's something that people really object to about the short flat process, work on that. But let's just get rid of MLDs. They haven't worked. It's like 75% of the lots have been created in this county. How many of them are substandard, and how many problems do we not know about that are occurring? Thank you.
All right. I, don't go away. So I ask you the same question I asked Dave Bowman. Short flats are administratively reviewed, yeah?
Yeah, but people are noticed of them, people know about them, people have an opportunity to comment, and they have an opportunity to appeal it. That's the difference. And they can go to a hearing if people request a hearing, and that is granted. So there is a lot more opportunity for people to weigh in on that, and it used to be that anything up to, you know, it used to be up to four lots was a short flat.
So let's take administrative review off the table, okay? So that's true of short flats, too. So that means that maybe the concern is notice, is one concern?
There's no transparency, there's no accountability, there's no.
And accountability, you mean, you can't use a route to appeal? Is that your issue?
Well, there's no way to see what's happening unless you do a lot of public records requests, and you can't find out in a timely manner. I mean, if we question what the administrator did.
That's a notice issue.
Yeah, I know, but that's accountability, too. Like, for instance, one of our complaints with the minor land division, Clagstone Ranch, was there were requirements, or there are requirements, in the minor land division code that were not being enforced. So that's an accountability issue with who's ever running the planning department, it's the administrator. But those things don't get discussed, there's no opportunity to raise those issues. We tried to raise them by having a hearing, we were not granted a hearing. So it really, the whole thing is just not fair.
Was there an action file? Was it declared right, was it an action file?
We couldn't afford it. And had we done it, think of how much money we would have spent. I mean, John Stockton can afford to hire a good lawyer, he's won the Supreme Court over this issue. We're a small nonprofit, and people who live in that neighborhood, they don't have a lot of money. I mean, so I don't think, I don't think that's really a reasonable thing to expect, that people should, you know, go to the.
So you believe the authority of the process. What you should review in LUPA, this was all LUPA, is less costly?
We had no opportunity.
I understand, but.
No, that's a costly route. The less costly route would have been to pay our $325 fee, or the decision that was made to approve the three at a time or the four at a time minor land divisions, and been granted a hearing, and had the opportunity to actually discuss the issues at hand.
The hearing before the hearing.
Yes. To reconsider their decision, but we were ignored. And we also protested the fees, and we did not get our fees back.
All right. Any other comments? Maybe welcome comments, because we're looking at this, you know, early due, too, so have some opinions on one of these options? Mr. Chairman, I have a question for staff, if I may. Sure. She, or minor land division, Susan mentioned that there's parcels created that were landlocked. It's my understanding, minor land divisions have to show ingress and egress to these parcels, is that not accurate?
They have to show access.
Okay. So no further comments?
Maybe I have one more follow-up question for you. In 16, in that version of the MLD, were contiguous MLDs allowed at that point in time? So that was something we changed to the 21 update.
August 21 update, I got rid of the contiguous MLDs.
Okay. When was the Clagstone? I think they said 16.
No, I think that was 2020, 2021 timeframe.
Oh, okay. Was it right before we made those changes?
I think a lot of those came in the summer, that that change is being processed with P and Z, and when, what year in the summer? If I remember, I don't have those timelines in my memory, so I can double check, but you know, the ledges, contiguous minor land divisions came in that summer, as did the Clagstone, a lot of those came in. Some of those requested extensions, time extensions of the final pot that I administratively denied because of the.
I have some public comment, Panhandle Health comment, I guess.
Always like to hear.
This is Catherine Colberg with Panhandle Health District, and I, you guys have heard this in the past, I just want to give some examples of what Panhandle Health has seen over the years with minor land divisions. The primary issues that we have seen stem from, obviously, septic issues. So in a normal plating process, does the water and sewage are assessed and verified to be available and adequate for each proposed lot that's intended to be created? And in general, these land divisions are, as far as I can tell, they're intended to create buildable lots. So when you don't assess the water and sewage on the front end, nobody has any idea what these, whether these lots are actually buildable and suitable for water and sewage or not. And we have definitely seen a lot of different lots over the years from my end and my staff when we go out to actually do the septic permitting and site evaluations after the lots have already been created. And some of the examples of things we've seen, I was just looking at one recently, that was a four-lot minor land division in which one of the lot lines cut right through an existing septic system. Another lot that was created is not suitable at all for septic because it's too close to surface water. If that particular land development had come to us and had to be reviewed for septic, maybe the lot lines would have ended up in the same way, and we would have known we're cutting off this existing septic and we're going to do something else. Or we might have, which we used to do a lot, and we do do on regular plating, subdivision plaits, we would have worked with them to shift the property lines around to ensure that septic system stayed on. system stayed on whichever lot it was intended to serve. And for the lot that was too close to surface water, the way we would've handled it is seeing if they wanted to do an easement for a septic system on one of the adjacent lots that met standards, that would've been incorporated into the plat, and the legal rights for wastewater disposal would've been on the plat for whoever ended up buying these in the future. So, there's all sorts of scenarios of lots being created. I, it's very hard to quantify, because as I've explained to you guys before, my staff just show up and they deal with whatever's going on on the site when someone's requested a septic permit. So, in many, many cases, this is anecdotal, I understand, I don't have quantifiable numbers right now, but I've just been involved with this conversation since 2016, and there's many, many cases where landowners are shocked and surprised to find that their land was never assessed for septic, they have no idea that it's really not suitable, or maybe it is suitable, but the only option they have is a $30,000, $40,000 septic system. So, Idaho has a tremendous amount of new products just in the past several years, but that comes with a lot of money. So, yes, a lot of these lots that have been created do end up with some type of system because of diligent work, I guess, that we're doing at my office to try to help people, but that frequently comes at an excessive cost for easements on other people's land if they can get it, or these complex alternative engineered or complicated systems that, you know, people are finding out after the fact, after they've already kind of maybe even built their house. That's another issue that combines with this. If they have a minor land division that was never assessed for septic, and then they get a BLP and build their house without assessing it for septic, and then they come to us after the fact, we, I, there's countless examples that I could pull up, problems stemming from that. The other part of this stems from the fact that ultimately, most people in our rural area are utilizing wells or surface water for their drinking water. So, it's critical that our septic systems and waste disposal systems are going in locations that are not impacting our drinking water sources, and of course, our recreational, the waters of the state in general. But when you're not accounting for the fact that you need setbacks from each person's well, because our septic rules aren't just based on the, what's happening on one person's parcel, it's the distant, it could encompass, it encompasses every parcel nearby that's within the range of our septic set, required setback. So, what we have seen with some of these smaller lots, is, you know, maybe they'll split up, make all these new lots, and someone puts their well maybe in the corner, well, that impacts all the other three lots that are, that might be adjacent to it. And there's just smart ways to plan where problems can be prevented, and it's really difficult. We have a big, I can think of one area that was created with a bunch of minor land divisions, and wells were put in, and now they're actually having to abandon some wells, because that's literally the only way that they can fit septic in. So, there's all these added costs that you guys want to hear about, because they're really the person's cost after they buy the land. On top of that, I can't stress enough that most people do not understand how septic systems work. I know I didn't before I had this job, and I know I've been educating my, the community for my whole career here, because I realized, nobody understands what's, what's going on. It's not just a septic tank, you need a drain field. And people that are moving here from municipal areas are clueless about this fact. They're especially clueless about the fact that we have huge portions of our county that are high, have high groundwater. My, one of my staff just got back from the field today, and she had groundwater pouring in at 12 inches below rain. So, we can't do much for a safe and sanitary septic system when there's that much water, because the pathogens just move around in that water and go off to the neighbors' drinking water sources or whatever. So, between the bedrock, steep slopes, surface water, springs, lakes, all of the things that we love about this county are also very challenging when it comes to citing a septic system. So, to me, I have seen it work better when we were involved in the front end to help people figure out where it really is appropriate to place their boundary lines. And I can remember the old days doing land development projects where we, I might've gone out three or four times working with the developer to figure out how they could shift these lines so we could end up with everyone having a suitable parcel for septic. So, I just think that a lot of the conversation has been about saving money and different things and time on the front end, but I can tell you that in my world, I'm seeing extreme amounts of money and time on the back end trying to solve problems or beg neighbors for easements. So, I'm not sure that that's the type, you can't, it's hard to compare those things, the costs and stuff, if you're not really aware of the back end cost and situations people are faced with, so.
Kathryn, so compare the MLD issues that you raised with the short plat, how's the short plat, it's all...
To be honest, I would have to know the, your exact process for the short plat, if it's involving lifting sanitary restrictions, which the minor land division happens with sanitary restrictions enforced, definitely, I guess, unless someone asks for... But I'm not sure what would be entirely different about a short plat and the process, and how it would specifically include PHD. And if a sanitary restriction lift is required, ultimately, honestly, that's the only way to know that that land is suitable, because that's what we would be doing. A sanitary lift is what we do when we go out for a land development and verify the wastewater.
How long are the sanitary restriction lifts good for?
They're indefinite, but the, and, and then it just boils down to hoping that people don't mess up their own land, you know?
Yeah, because you don't want to change... I have some past experience as well. You know, where we go ahead and, and do those septic site surveys, sanitary restriction lift, go ahead, GPS, it's on the face of the plat. We literally go back four years later for the permit, dig, right? We find the exact hole, the lathe, and everything, dig there, and now it's, is denied.
Well, was this back a long time ago? Because I...
It was in 2016.
I would have to see what the scenario is, but I do know that site conditions do change. I've seen that a lot where different, I've seen on old plats where the GPS was, that was identified on the plat was in the wrong location, I've seen that. I've seen, or it wasn't, I don't know if it was a GPS or what coordinates the end, but sometimes it does, I don't know. But I've seen different scenarios where they might, you know, create a pond on their water, or they divert water, or different, there's all sorts of things people can do on their land that could compromise something. But, I mean, in general, we want, we want a suitable space. I don't know what the scenario was on that, so I don't know. But in general, if, if we're lifting sanitary restrictions, we've assessed it at that point in time. If something does change, I don't know, but at least it gives the lift, the buyer of that parcel, a lot more assurance than nothing, I guess, I could put it that way. But a septic permit's the only way to really have a permit to put into a system. But lifting the sanitary restrictions, I mean, I, I, I guess, yeah, it, it's good for as long as it is compromised, and then, but if the septic rules change, of course, when we go to issue a permit, we have to, we're bound and obligated to work with the current septic rules, so there's that too.
So, 12, this is a, this is BRCRC, 12-623, provides a part, that assumes disposal method for all building sites, that is included by Panhandle Health District and where it's available, maybe provided. That's part of the, that's one of the standards, it's a short plat, but it's also one that's proposed to be provided in the MLD.
That's, that's not a requirement, that's, it says maybe provided. The requirement comes in BRCRC 12-41219. That's the only slot that...
What'd I say? I'm looking this up really quickly.
Yeah, that's fine. Note 19 says, "All, let's see, new lots created through any land division process shall include the sanitary restriction lift." So, and that applies when it's an urban water system, so it's a lot created that is connected to an urban water and individual wells, so those are going to be one acre lots per the current code. And then, the community drain field and individual wells also requires that. Everything else, if not the division type, it's, it's coming out of four lots.
It has to be a site. So, how's that apply to MLDs?
Same thing, if it's a minor land division that's using urban water, or it's a community LSAS and, and individual wells, it's that lot size of one acre, then the restriction, the sanitary restriction lift is required.
Before, what about smaller flats? Access of acres?
So, if it's two and a half acre property, it's individual law and septic, so it's not required, regardless if it's created via short plat, septic division, or any other land.
So, is that one of the reasons why, well, the option says five acre minimum, and it's for that reason?
There's a lot of reasons it's the five acres, it talks about road standards and then well and septic standards. But again, it's, it's that standard or sanitary restriction lift, it's only on the lot size creation, not the land division type. So, if you guys want to change that, it needs to be changed in the Table 412 and then applied again somewhere in Chapter 6. That permissive "may" in 63 that you mentioned, we have, we require to change it to "shall" or something. We would want to change it in both places if that's what the condition was.
Thank you, Kathryn. May I get back to you? Yeah, don't go far.
I have a quick comment. So, when the minor land division code was added and minor land divisions were created, at that time, there was a "shall" in the subdivision design standards. Basically, you had to have Panhandle Health District to come out and then take a look at your, at your proposed land division and, you know, do a site visit. And one reason they got rid of it with minor land divisions, ironically, is because they said it was too expensive, because Panhandle, they said Panhandle Health District was charging too much for site assessment, is that what you call it? And so, that was the, one of the rationales. So, at that time, though, it took a couple of years before they went back in, and they were surprised when we learned later, they removed the sanitary lift requirement and changed it to "may." And then, sometime later, that footnote 9 or 19, or whatever it is, was, I think, because they started having problems. But frankly, I think there's a lot of things to fix here, and I mean, going back to the way it was, under the subdivision code, when it was required, is the way to go. And that would cover both subdivisions over 10 lots and anything under there too, because everything would be covered in the subdivision code. They'd have to follow this. Thank you.
But there's still a, a difference between a subdivision and a short plat?
Yes, but they're both covered under the subdivision code. They're both types of subdivisions right now, minor land, yes, they are, they're under the subdivision code. They follow the same standards.
It depends on how the county defines it. Because it could define, short plat, you know, as part of the...
Wait, they could, but I think right now, it's, I think right...
I'm not sure I understand it, but...
But it's covered under the design standards of the subdivision code. The procedures are different, but the design standards are the same.
Well, what are county defines subdivision? We define the short plat. They, they are distinct, they are...
Yes, but, but if you read the code, it does say that the short plat follows, you know, the design standards with these exceptions. I mean, they pull out certain exceptions, but, I mean, it's generally, you have more protection as the neighbor that's under a short plat or even a subdivision than you do if it's a minor land division.
Okay.
If you guys, if anybody online wants to provide comment, I bet hands go up and down. So, if you have one.
All right. Whoever's online. I'm muted.
Hi. This is Brett Crawford, Bonner County. As I'm sure this commissioner, commission is aware, I'm in support of Option 1. The removal of the administrative approval for both MLDs and short plats would be the best option. It would be better replaced by short plats because there would be noticing of neighbors, it would ideally include public hearings, pass the cost of infrastructure onto loan landowners rather than the taxpayers, by requiring to follow more design standards, and to be reviewed in a more transparent process that would include the protections that LUPA requires counties to have. Furthermore, a huge problem with the, with MLDs is a culture to approve. Given the entire process is completely behind apartment doors, I have seen many examples of misinterpretation of code in which the current planning director is involved with. The culture of approval needs to end. The administrative approval of both short plats and MLDs are inherent, are an inherent part of the problem. This includes examples of land use applications by six past or current sitting zoning and planning commission members. I'd like to thank Commissioner Lynn Scott for pointing out that PHD does not review properties for MLDs, and to thank Kathryn for speaking to this yet once again. At the March 17 special meeting with the planning department, they showed the BOCC three examples that proved the contiguous problem cannot be solved, and I hope Mr. Gabel urges you to watch that or presents it to you, because it just clearly shows that once a property changes hands, there's no answer for contiguous. I have a list of all the contiguous MLDs, I can post on my website and send those on to you, so you can get a clear picture of how often it was used. It was more significant than it's being talked about. I will listen to the rest of this hearing and will provide you with examples of all the problems you ask about. I may not have them all in front of me, but I have opened at least 80 to 90% of all MLDs ever applied for, and I have found sufficient problems to respond to your questions. I hope you've had an opportunity to review my emails and review my site. Here's a short list of items I've been talking about for years, and forgive me if some of this is repeated. Minor land divisions, one, no design standards, so we're creating thousands of parcels with no attention to impacts on roads, septic, solid waste, EMS, fire department, schools, traffic, et cetera. Two, placeholders, applicants allowed to be, allowed to apply for MLDs before the parcels even exist. Three, no sunset date, applicants allowed to make significant changes long after applying. Four, contiguous is not defined, that is for time, location, or applicant. Five, at the July 2012, 2022 appeal hearing, Dan McDonald directed Mr. Gabel that LLCs were separate, even if owned by the same person, this was in the Weimer case. Six, at the same hearing, Mr. Gabel was directed to quote, "Give the one, first one for free," unquote, which overrides the short plat code, meaning a developer could use an MLD to create four lots and a short plat to create seven, a process that should have to be a subdivision. Seven, everyone can do an MLD, examples, dozens of neighbors could apply within the same section, creating pocket subdivisions. Eight, the public is not informed, and the website lists are made, are using the made-up name of the subdivision only, so people can't even look up if a subdivision or a MLD is applied for in their neighborhood. Nine, again, about the public not being informed. Items are immediately placed on consent agenda, so they have no foreknowledge and often miss the appeal date. Ten, PHD exclusion. Eleven, a shared well is being used to mean a community system or urban water, and, and requirements, and that allows them to reduce parcel size below zoning requirements. Twelve, many have been using spot zoning. Thirteen, they're often combined with administrative variances or other variances. Fourteen, they're occurring in ACIs without the city being notified or city P&amp;Z's review. Oftentimes, there are multiple contiguous MLDs within ACIs creating subdivision because it's four, like in the case of the city of Sandpoint, P&amp;Z doesn't get triggered until it's five. Fifteen, MLDs can be a first step to short plats, which also do not require public hearings. So, as in the case of Whiskey Jack, they were able to create 48 parcels continuously without ever going to a public hearing. Sixteen, MLDs can be done on short plats and short plats on land that has had an MLD, which again, avoids the subdivision process, that's kind of redundant. Seventeen, agency responses are considered in the decisions for approval, even if there are no comment or response, which is unrealistic. The county has used non-responses as tacit approval. Eighteen, it's in the subdivision code but not treated as a subdivision. Twenty, there's a conflict of interest with Glahy. Glahy is a consultant who submits them, Glahy is the company that reviews them, and Glahy is now the county surveyor. Twenty-one, land can be prepped for MLDs prior to filing for a BLP, so there's no protections for land within the code because they are carved out from subdivisions. Twenty-two, the MLD application includes, the application itself, the paper application includes a term for a community system that is not defined, and therefore, I've seen applicants write many different things in it, because Bonner County revised codes does not have a definition of a community system, and that, when they are interpreting it, they are not using the IDEQ interpretation of what a community system is. Also, there is not a definition of urban water. I have more, but they're not as significant, and I will go offline. Thank you.
Thank you. What was seven? Thank you, Brett. Any, any other comments?
It'll be a test.
We'll close the, the comment portion, still a little workshop. Thank you, Brett. It'll be a test. We'll close the, the comment portion. Still, this workshop, we're loose on other comments, so. Got in mind. So how do you want to proceed? As I see it. These are the general, general of the files. Notice, lack of sufficient standards, administrative approval. Which then I guess goes into much of other things like just review and recent statement requirement and all that kind of stuff. Probably others, but those are the wide categories that I see. Go through these various options. I have some questions about it, but I think option one is pretty self-explanatory. Basically eliminates MLDs and the divisions or exceptions. Options two or three essentially incorporate many of the requirements and standards that are, that exist for short plats and subdivisions. I understand it. And I did have some questions about, about some of those. We can go into it if you're, we're pointing in that direction. I don't understand why short plats were included, were excluded from the definition of subdivision, maybe. They could explain that to me. Online adjustments are, are not a subdivision? That's true, whatever you come up with in terms of the MLDs or not. Should be the law, my adjustments are my, my potential changes. Do not, do not create a, of the lot. That should be, I think that's, that's, that's decided in a certain way. That should be in there. I have some questions about some of the standards. Why some were included and some weren't, but I'm not sure we need to go into those and think, because of where we're going on this. I don't see those requirements in the, in the option two or three. There's certainly. I think would be very beneficial, I think we mentioned this a while back, have the list side by side so we can see what those requirements, which ones overlap, which ones relate to the subdivision process versus a short plat. Very beneficial.
Jake, that packet you sent out for this meeting, you had included a new document I hadn't seen before that was a spreadsheet that basically summarized, you know what I'm talking more about?
The land division standards.
Was that, wouldn't that satisfy kind of what Matt's talking about? That's something.
I don't, does it show the, maybe we can go through it.
If you could put it up on the big screen maybe? Because I think that does, it helps me tremendously to understand, okay, if we're doing all these different titles and these different things, we're doing, you know, short plat, what are the requirements associated with that versus a MLD?
I understand that basically what you've done is you included 0621, the proposal there, 0623 A and B, 0624 A, D and E. I think the reason that was scheduled was because it would be unique to a short plat. I don't have, I don't advise 0624. Incorporated 0625, our mental conditions of 0626.
Which option were you talking about? Some of these seem to go.
Option two or three. I'm looking at, right now, I'm looking at option three.
So 620, some of these were a copy paste rather than a reference back to the code. So submerged lands and depth with, for example, rather than calling back to the standard that's already found in the code, it gets copy pasted into this, into 6.6. Rather than when those codes get updated, have to update it to different places, it's a lot more sense just to reference back to one location. So that's why the 621 and 622. 623 is your utilities and services. Yeah, services and utilities. So in that, there's A, B, C, and D with various standards. So A talks about all urban services, B talks about water supply, C is your sewage disposal. I think we mentioned that already, and D is the fire center. So I think in option two, given it's only a five acre, it's a five acre lot, we call to C and D, which would require the sewage disposal and a fire, fire protection requirements that are required on the flats.
Well, that's assuming, assuming a five acre parcel. Correct. What about two and a half?
The way we have option two written, a two and a half acre property would have to be created via short plat.
I know, but what if we talked about that last time? You said it could be five acres or two and a half.
We put, I put a note in here, we left it at five acres and I have a note talking about two and a half. The reason I put it there at five acres initially was the road frontage standard. Right now, anything below five acres requires frontage on a public road. Road and bridge has been kind of opposed to that idea. They want less public roads. So changing that standard in general for all land divisions, including minor land divisions, two and a half acres might alleviate some of their concern on new lot toward newer road creations.
Is road creation the only, to Alan's point, I'm trying to understand too. Is, is roads the only question when we talk about the requirements for a one acre lot versus a 10 acre lot?
No. So anything below two and a half requires some kind of urban service. So you're an urban water system or a urban store.
So if I go buy a piece of land, one acre out in the middle of Boonies, I can't?
So if it, if you're creating new lots, current legal non-conforming lots, retain any property rights any other legally created lot has, right? So if it's a lot created in 1972 and it's one acre in the Boonies, then go ahead and build on it. But if you want to split that one acre lot into four quarter acre lots, you have to do some kind of urban service. Those requirements are found in four eleven, four twelve, not in chapter six.
Is road and bridges concerned beyond road maintenance?
There's some-
Do they just not want public roads, even if they decide it's a public road that they're not going to maintain?
Because-
And if so, what is their concern about?
There's some expectation when you live on a public road that it's going to be publicly maintained. And I think we have far more privately maintained public roads than we do publicly maintained public roads. So part of it is managing expectations and people know. The other thing is when it's a publicly owned road that's privately maintained, I'm going to mix these up, so if I do, just correct them. And they also have, they're required to require encroachment permits on that publicly owned road. So part of it is, is less encroachment permits on private roads. So it's less administrative burden on their staff when it's a public, or a private road. They want less work?
So all of 624 is incorporated into short plat process, is that right?
Roads in access? I believe so. I'll look for my planner. Yes.
That's true. That's true of 625. 621? So on 621, Jake, versus lot design, I thought all parcels have to, with, the width to depth and all that.
Correct.
Those are all the subdivision and MLDs. Should those be checked out?
They should. Because lot design applies to all.
Yeah, everything. So. So the reason for incorporating parts of these ordinances is because of the size of the lot? Those are MLD.
Say that again.
I'm just trying to understand what, you know, why we're incorporating some parts of these ordinances. I think they're all, they're all incorporated into, for the graphical one, they're all incorporated into short plat and subdivision process, right?
So if you apply all of those, then you might as well get rid of the minor land division. Because if the, if the goal of the minor land division was to expedite some kind of process, that's what we, we took, we took two hats, right? One is option one, just get rid of it altogether. There's been a lot of angst. I think you heard much of that tonight. So that's, you know, the first option for a reason, right? Because I think that's the clean solution. Go back to, I think we need to revise a little bit the short plat procedures and reference them correctly. There's some other minor changes throughout there and even the subdivision, right? So then we took the other side of, we're going to delete the code altogether. We need to show that we have some amount of action, some amount of, of review to try to figure out a way to solve this and solve at least the majority of the concerns or a large significant amount of the concerns. Show some diligent effort by the planning staff and by the planning commission. Say, we looked at these other solutions, we tried to solve these things and in the end, we decided it's unsolvable as, you know, as the, as the problem is presented to us. So that's, those are the two hats we put on, right? So in option two, you have this idea of five acre lots, so you can create minor land divisions so long as they're tiny lots. You have a bunch of standards that should apply to five acre lot creations. And then in option three, we went further. So if you're going to go down to urban service level, you know, less than two and a half acre, then what, what should be applied? So you have some code provisions in there that we added for, you know, if you're not going to require a new road to be created, then you're going to require lots to be fronted on an existing public private road, right? So the road already has to be there, so you can't just create a lot that needs frontage on some road. So same thing with urban services, you call back to the, the section in 623, all of that applies to the smaller lots. So we tried to figure out, like, if there's a way to, to resolve this and to resolve at least the significant amount or a lot of the concern that we heard, you know, what would that look like? So that's, that's the realm or the lens we tried to craft and need to look at. So not saying that any one of these is the right answer, we're just giving you three different possibilities. And if somewhere in the end, or we decide it's just not, it's not viable, then go with option one. I think we have some changes in the family division that we were contemplating last time. It doesn't sound like the board wants that to go away. So maybe in the end, we just make some changes to the family, family division and the way of land division. And then move on to, you know, staff can make some other recommended, recommended changes to other division types and changes. Or if you see it's adequate in one of these other scenarios or combinations, some of those standards, seems like it solves the, the problem that's presented, then.
Did you say that the board, the B O C C, according to you, seems to want to keep family exemptions? Is that what you just said?
So when we went through the moratorium hearings, it was a large public outcry to keep family exemptions essentially intact, or at least the option available. So the board seemed in favor in general of the family exemption. I think if the planning commission and planning staff comes up with some really good rationale as to why this is being abused and what should be deleted, then I'm sure the board would entertain that option. But when staff, but is the bigger reason. So but when staff did our review, I think we presented this two weeks ago, it doesn't appear that the family exemption code has been misused as we thought it would. So I think that supports the board's position.
Why is, why is the definition of subdivisions, why is short plat?
Because the, it's really in support, that, that code change, and I can present that. I'm just going to present option two there. So it's disappointing the county's position that we get to define a subdivision. And the way code is currently written, we've defined a subdivision as such. So to really clarify that a short plat is not, is not a subdivision, it's not appealed via Lupa, it's added there.
Why would one exempt that?
It already is exempted by definition, so it's really a clarification, just like the minor land divisions.
Oh, section you were referring to, you talked about state code?
So state code allows us to define a subdivision.
Right. So we could define a short plat as such.
We could, absolutely.
And it would be subject to Lupa.
Correct.
Why would that be?
I didn't say it was good or bad. I'm, I'm-
Okay, let me ask a question. What's the ramifications other than, you know, now that that decision has to be supported by a recent statement? Is that a problem?
It's not a problem. It's a, it's a change. The way I crafted this was supporting the current practice, so not necessarily looking for something different.
Sure. So the way it was before 2016, I'm not quite sure when they changed the definition. Maybe it's when they created the MLD. But subdivision was defined as any land division. And short plats were just then a type of subdivision. So I just went and looked it up. You're right. No longer defined, short plat no longer is defined as a subdivision. So that means also there's no opportunity for judicial review and according to the county.
That's not true. There is judicial review, but it's just a tip.
It has to be under declaratory judgment, not through a land, a blue blood.
You still have to do the same process because you'd have to show that there's a potential administrative remedies and all that sort of stuff. I was trying to, I mean, so it may sound a lot different, but there is another path there. Question is whether or not that should be the path or whether there's a judicial file. I have a question.
I think the code needs to make it clear as well because we were under a different, it was a different understanding when we were working on our minor motion to, or reconsideration. But I just want to make sure you knew that it used to be that all land divisions are considered subdivisions.
So state code does that five or more is subdivision. So be told about. But it also says that counties or cities can make their own definition.
Correct.
Whether the short plat is or is not now under Lupa, once you include, more or less, it becomes subdivision. Thus, thus was clearly defined as one or the other.
So one way to, so if you want to define these all as subdivisions, you would say subdivision is any division of property. And then you have different division types, like a large subdivision, small subdivision, or something along those. And it just changes your process. Call division of land via plaque or something like that would be a subdivision, right?
That goes back to the historical, we're called subdivisions, the short subdivision, large and small.
To really, to really clarify it, I would, I would define subdivision in a broader sense and then have your definition of, of types of land division.
Right. So from an administrative standpoint, how do you handle a short plat differently than an MLD?
It's the standards that are being reviewed, right? So your road standards and your infrastructure standards and even the, I think you heard this from a number of folks tonight, so your agencies get routed, the review process is longer, the prior to final plat, the infrastructure has to be constructed and in place or bonded for, which is different. Minor land division don't have a infrastructure requirement for, especially for roads, which is a good example. It's usually where, where the big hiccup comes in of people don't want to build a road to any kind of standard, they want to just build their driveway or just have it using on the plan. So that's usually the biggest hang up, like someone says, well, what do I need to do? Well, okay, I don't want to build a road, I don't want to buy an aircraft.
Or if the MLDs were eliminated, like I said, would it be?
I was just saying the short plat.
Yep. Unless it was a family exemption.
Correct.
So. Who would get, who would get notice of application for short?
So I believe it, it calls back, I don't know, I love my planners. Are you wanting the noticing? Yeah, who gets notice for short plats? It's all agencies and-
It could be all agencies and neighbors within 300 feet. And then it's a 30 day common period, 40 days if it's a, an area that's packed. And then there is a, I believe it's seven, a seven day or 10 business day decision window and then a 10 day-
and then a 10 day appeal period.
So.
I might go over time here. So if the county commissioners have already expressed their concern about MLDs, well, what do we do? It seems to me that we should just concentrate on family exemption, vote option one, except for family exemptions.
Option one also eliminates a family exemption.
Correct.
As written.
As written, yeah.
I don't know why it doesn't have to.
Concentrate on some.
There are fairly significant changes to family exemption, option two, that's right.
I'm trying to see what those are.
I also, I did drop into you guys' file county's family exemption code or family division code, which is different than ours in a lot of ways. And some of it is a little bit cleaner than the way we even have this drafted up. There's a relatively new, I think they adopted it last year. Is that right? Last year they had it, and I think it was August.
Which county?
County of Dallas. Is that in the document?
Yeah, it's at the very tail.
Iowa County MLDs.
Option three, added under family exemptions, six, ten, eight, is that right? Or is that just rewording?
I think that's already in there. It's, um, so we changed who is eligible, if you wanted it, more or less, it's expanding the list. County County's code is a little bit better, because it says blood relative, or by marriage, or by, I want to say it was like civil order, so if like you adopt kids or something along those lines, it just makes it a little bit broad and a little bit easier. I have a, just a broader sense of who could be eligible. It's a little bit cleaner as to the process of how many lots or parcels you can create if, and how many parcels you can create. Might be worth reviewing if anybody's looking at it and say, you know, we don't like that, we like the rare.
You know, on option three, and I think it's in current code right now, limited to the creation of four parcels, that's on the parent parcel, creating four parcels for the parent parcel, because that doesn't mean that mom and dad have to pick their four favorite kids if they have five. But a parent parcel, this is limited to, limited to the creation of four parcels, total family exemption number seven. My always, my understanding that, from a parent parcel, say you had a 20 acre piece, you can create four parcels, if there are fives, four fives. But that doesn't mean that you can only give four of your kids property. If you had a separate parcel, you can give another, your other kid, your fifth and sixth child, something else on a not that parent parcel, is my understanding, but, yeah.
I think, I think I've seen other codes where it limits the number of creative properties by individuals, so I don't think our code exempts that. There's some where it's, you know, Ted's the creator, the property Ted can create four. And if changing hands, it could be by marriage or divorce or by trust, all of those don't modify who, you know, that Ted was a creator of that. Essentially, if you get married and now Suzie owns it, Suzie's your wife, she's exempted from creating four.
Is the most of the changes to the family exemption, option two?
They were pretty parallel.
They're all except they got, whether they got stepparent, stepchild. I heard you say that.
I believe they're the same on the family exemption side.
Yeah.
On the family division. The waiver of land division under F has some additional changes to it under option two.
So why would we change that from a waiver?
Why would we change that from the.
It's wrong with the 20.
Do you guys remember why we ended up, this was like a month ago.
On the timber lands.
Oh, production timber. So if the waiver of land division is used for a production timber lands, then limiting the size of it and the zoning district in which it may be created, that's where we're coming back to. We think it's fine the way it is as 20 acre parcel creation.
I'm sorry, can you explain that again? I missed it.
So waiver of land divisions has historically been used for typically timber production properties, and also for estate planning, so when a large piece of property being divided up between several kids, so those are waived for any kind of platting requirements. So that you can create via deed with a stamp in the department, 20 acre parcel.
Does that have a legal description?
Has a legal description and a stamp from.
And does that have restriction on for that division or not?
The only standards that apply to it right now are six, two, one, which is like your depth to width standards, and then anytime someone's creating more than, they're creating more than 10 continuously, we're going to, we call it a subdivision, with that 12, 600 C standing. We're using that to circumvent that almost subdivision.
I think you actually have to show legal access.
Correct. Oh, thank you, yeah.
Things like that. But I agree, I think we can leave that at 20, but put a little caveat on, in there, about 40 acres in the forest, 40 acres.
Or what does sort of be done with it?
Aren't, yes.
It can't be, it's got to be consistent with the zoning.
Right now, it doesn't. Right now, if you have, if you have someone who's own, will say stamps, and has large parcels, they can go out there and create 20 acre parcels kind of waiver, even if, there's no restriction in it.
The restriction's in the zoning size. We're not going to allow for a non, like a non-conforming property being created.
I think we might need to go ahead and address that, because I don't think that's spelled out.
You can say, so, yeah, you can put some line in there, you can conform to zoning, the zoning lots I standards.
Okay. And I don't see any reason to go into the four year. All right, well, anyone else want to dive in here?
So we also discussed removing this waiver of land division and the family division out from this additional requirements of exempt properties or uncut parcel creations or something along those lines.
Rather than subdivisions?
Well, rather than additional requirements, it's kind of buried in this other spot.
That makes sense.
I think rewording and kind of shuffling a little bit these code sections and just clarifying.
Language, additional requirements, I don't know if it's not additional requirements, it's old.
We can, we can come up with a version of this, incorporate whatever changes to the family division in the, on the frame of the format of what it is.
All right, well, I mean, I think we could, I'll consider here, and the option two, three, that's, and it's kind of, ultimately, what's going to happen, I believe, seems like the direction coming from the county commissioners, not that we're bound by that, but I could do something that's useful. MLDs are probably not going to survive, so we ought to concentrate on family exemption, whatever language we need to add to the code, make more sense, like the title, and then the waiver, we just talked about the waiver issue. So anyway, that's my thought. Anybody else have thoughts?
Well, I kind of agree with that perspective, but also I'm unconvinced at this point that there's a way to craft language to mitigate the issue of contiguous, successive, adjacent, all of those things that I don't think we wanted to have happen when we created this code back in 2021, we wanted it at least to be one time, not contiguous, not successive, et cetera. And it's clear that we weren't successful doing that the first time. And it's, I haven't heard a great solution to fix that issue, and I think that's something that should be fixed. So barring that, then I'd be inclined to go with option one as well, address whatever we need to do with the family exemptions to clean that up. I don't know if this is part of the same thing or not, but since it's been brought up, we ought to also define urban service, this, you know, was clearly all the way. So that's clear. So those were my thoughts in all of these things going. These three options as they've been presented, discussion, so far.
Urban services has a definition that's pretty broad. It should be broken up between urban water, urban sewer.
It needs to be clear what it is, because I think the definition today is not clear what was, what the intent was.
You know, you know, our current, our current land use component in 5.6 goes in some pretty good detail on some of this stuff. You know, defining, because it uses the terms, you know, urban-like, community private water system, and there may be a third one, pretty much synonymous to each other, and, but that's in our current code, our land use 5.6. So I think that kind of gives us a path to how we are and have been looking at urban services. And I was just kind of looking, because someone made the comment earlier about by far MLDs have created more parcels than anything. I believe that's true up until 22, because the last couple of years, that's not the case at all.
It's been mostly subdivisions.
Mostly subdivisions.
And the subdivision number is inclusive of a subdivision that hasn't been final platting yet. So that's preliminary plat approval. So just kind of, there's a large subdivision up in Priest Lake area that created 114, 100? Over 100 lots.
110.
Exactly.
110.
110.
It hasn't been platting.
It hasn't been, it's been preliminary approved, they're working on urban sewer systems, they have to build out the water and sewer system. It's through a PUD, so they have a four-year preliminary approval.
Okay. All right, so.
Have, I know you mentioned that we're going to possibly go ahead and invite some of those planners, surveyors, having a meeting with us to discuss this, have you done any, like that to reach out?
No, so, as I mentioned last meeting, I, the intent was, if the planning commission wants to create a draft, from there, I think it would be beneficial to get stakeholder input, right? Invite agencies and other stakeholders like surveyors and project reps to come in and look at the code. So if the revision is simply to delete the code, if you guys want to hold a stakeholder meeting, we can, or we can send out the notices and expect them to be in the public hearing.
Well, it seems to me that if you have a birthday notice, all by short plat procedure, standards are appropriated, assuming. I didn't necessarily put it on the list, but processes are there. But as long as it's defined as a subdivision, it's a loop.
That's, I don't even think that needs to be.
I don't know what else we have to do besides eliminate it from.
Agreed.
That's kind of a question I've had all along this whole discussion, but it's not subject to LUPA. And I don't have in front of me to look at the MLD, section 12, short subdivision, but first off, clarification is a short plat, that is subject to LUPA.
I don't believe so. As written right now, it has defined in our code, I don't believe it's subject to LUPA.
So what, where are you with the short plat of the MLD?
Through a LUPA judicial review.
Right, yeah. But what else would we have to do?
And that's because we didn't define subdivision broadly as any division of land, of which then there are three types, subdivision, short plat, MLD.
Exactly.
Because it's all in the same section. I had that same question, yes.
It's on there, but it's just.
Wasn't obvious to me why that would be the case, but.
Well, and also, the code, as it currently exists, specifically a limit of land divisions. So if you take that out, is there something else that has to be done? We have to define it as any land division, except for a family exemption.
So I think, I think it needs to be broadly defined as any land division via plat, or any platting land.
Case that was referred to earlier.
And creates two or more lots or something like that.
Case it was referred to earlier, I know that the board did even look at that language and said, one of my divisions is a subdivision.
I had a broader idea to reformat all of chapter six, to very much clarify, if we were going to retain minor land divisions and family exemptions, and you would essentially create a subchapter for subdivisions, here's all the standards, this is the base review, right? Here's all the other administrative land divisions and land modifications to include in minor land divisions, short plats, lot land adjustments, and then the third chapter of unplatted land divisions. So if we wanted to retain, like, the process we have now, I had, I have like a draft up of what the code would look like in that kind of scenario. Not in its full extent, but we had like a framework put together to redo all of chapter six in that type of format. I wanted to hold these meetings, first with you guys, before I put a whole bunch of work into it, and say, do we even want to retain that type of administrative land divisions not subject to LUPA? Or do we want to redefine it and go all back into a LUPA basis?
It ought to be pulled back under LUPA, period, not the end. Is there anybody that disagrees? I mean, I mean.
Well, it could be, it could be under LUPA, but still have the short plat, the administrative decision.
Administrative process.
But otherwise, I mean, anybody looking at their property has something to do with it, one of the ground rules. If you don't, it's LUPA, you can go there and see. If it's not, then it's got to be a body in the county code, what that authority is for the county to say, yes, the property is now divided. And that's not falling back on any, not state code, other than just the whole issue of county and city government sovereignty in that sense. These things are a little flat.
And Alan, when you said except the administrative review, can you clarify that for me? Is that, you're talking about when Jake and the team can just kind of do the sign-off on those minor things that don't impact really anything?
A short plat, minor land division is administratively, so is a short plat under the code.
I just wanted to make sure.
The difference is that it's, that you can't, you still can't, see, reused by the county commissioners, like.
Right, it can be, I mean, any administrative position can be appealed under chapter two.
So the short plat requires notice more than the MLD, so that's the difference too.
Well, we can, we can make sure that it is subject to LUPA, and then motions will be considered, all that stuff, and then, yeah, if we do, I mean, LUPA checking applies. I think that's something that probably most.
Yeah, it's back in charity that the process is.
I understand that probably the actions do. Well, I'll be, my suggestion is to give direction to Jake and staff to move forward with the provisions of all 600. And the language, deal with the family exemption as a separate issue, not as a, unplatted land, whatever you want to call it. And make sure, and revise whatever the procedures are and so on, so that there is an administrative review, and there is a, it is a LUPA technical, short plat, okay?
Does, does the commission want to leave definitions for these land division types in chapter six or move to chapter eight, where all the other definitions are?
Well, to me, the definition is pretty simple, and any land division.
Right, I'm just saying where it's placed in the body right now is in the beginning of chapter six.
I think you have the definition section, put the definitions there, that way everybody knows where to go look for definitions, if they want to find one.
Yeah, I mean, we've eliminated most of 611, so I don't think you need to add all these exceptions. Maybe you do, maybe you do have that exceptions. You want, you want to say, you certainly want to, well, you know, you have to. you have to, but you don't want to have mineral oil and gas pieces on land adjustments.
Yeah, because they don't create. A lot.
Cemeteries. At least might answer your next thought.
Okay. Reg has a hand.
So Cal, just to clarify, can I ask a question?
Sure.
So you're directing them to pursue basically getting rid of MLDs, keeping family exemptions, and then obviously cleaning up a bunch of stuff that needs to be cleaned up and fixed up. Is that correct?
That's right.
Under family exemptions, just so I understand, what standards would not have to be met that otherwise would have to be met if somebody was just splitting land or platted land for development? I mean, would they not have to get separate approval?
Well, it's not platted.
So only unplatted lands are subject to the family exemption? All right. That's what I was looking for clarification. If we're keeping that, that's the intent.
But in the short plat.
But it can be platted too.
Yeah, but even in the short plat.
It's not a family exemption.
It's only unplatted.
I just thank you. I just wanted to make sure those protections are still going to be in place regardless. Thank you.
Yeah, we're, we're not plating family exemptions.
No, it's only unplatted.
And how would we, where would out-of-land justice be?
So they're under additional requirements. So I'll move that onto, under unplatted land divisions and modifications or something. We'll come up with any new convention that makes sense for that.
Okay. On the, on the, on the wire there, Reg? Yeah, want to comment? Hello?
I think she, what she was asking.
I was actually just going to say that we've been capturing Commissioner Songstead's voice because he's leaning back from the microphone. Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
We're going to get you a lapel mic there.
So we might want to expect to see, first of all, is it commissioner agreeable to what I'm suggesting?
I'm agreeable because I just feel like with the MLDs, there's not an enforcement. There's no way to really enforce all these guidelines. Well, not enforcement, if I have to. But I do believe we do need to keep the family exemption in there because of that fact that you have families, they want, they're, they want some of the land. Right? That's the reason I'm here, saying, well, you're being honest, because I felt like giving me a credit line to build them, although I couldn't afford it. So I think we have to maintain that with the families that are here, that have been here. But with that exemption, I think we can cover that. But I think with the other process, there has to be some accountability, and with MLDs right now, there's no way to be accountable, continues or multiples or.
There's still been a problem.
Yes. And the family exemptions haven't been a problem. So I think going forward, we should maintain that.
Okay. So when can we, when can we get this?
So do you want to review it in workshop one more time before scheduling for a hearing? I think probably pretty.
Yeah, I would say yes. I think so. Yeah, I think so. But I think we could do it at a, whatever our schedule is.
So your next meeting is, you have two hearing items, right? We have the RV park use table, or use change, and then we have the hearing for the implementation of the change. So you want to add it as a workshop item after those and see if we have time to review that?
Right. Is that on the third?
I believe it's on the third, at two weeks from today.
So Catherine, since you're here, is this what we're, we're thinking about, makes sense to you?
I'm not sure if I told you, right now you're talking about just retaining the family split.
Right, and then, but basically everything else would be under subdivision or short plat.
And then would it require a sanitary restriction list? Is that?
Again, that's in 411 or 4, that's 412 note 19. It's not a change in check. Unless you change the requirement under 623 or 1D. 623C, make it, shall be provided. That would require all lots created via any plat to be a sanitary restriction. Or sewage disposal method for all building sites as approved by. That correction.
Include that, include that in your redraft.
Well, except, you know, when you and Jason were here last time, you know, we talked about that data. I can't remember if it was just showing her bad luck, where you're creating parcels and, and these subdivisions were dry camping. So how do we, how do we do with that? We're not going to make them have a, you know, sanitary restriction lift if they're not ever intended for that purpose.
I guess the big thing that I see that's been occurring is the MLDs have been created with a language on there that's essentially just the county's language choice, and it's essentially leaving sanitary restrictions in force, but we haven't been involved with that. But just so you're aware, in Idaho, when we're doing land, um, land development application reviews at Panhandle Health District, we're doing the same type of review as we do all over the state because we're following a statewide land SOP that we're, we come to with DEQ and all the health districts. So within that, historically, before the MLD process, we did have an option of someone could come in and apply for a land development application, leaving sanitary restrictions in force, so basically doing what a minor land division is doing. So from my standpoint, you know, someone could still come to Panhandle Health and ask for a plat and have us involved to leave sanitary restrictions in force in theory. I don't know what, whether, how that weighs into this conversation because I would be concerned about the slippery slope of like, we don't want to be doing that all the time if the goal is really to create mostly buildable lots. So we, so we wouldn't want people coming in and saying, well, I'm not going to lift sanitary restrictions just to kind of expedite the process. But, you know, I guess I don't know how that would work for you guys if you're literally trying to create parcels of land that are recreation only and are not intended for building. Not sure how often that request comes up, but I don't know how you would work it in in there, but I mean, certainly we have room to do a plat like that from our end of things. But the same concerns what I would have is that we even have recreational lots that exist now, and we have people who think that you can build on them, and then they call us and they, they just don't know because they're real dirt into, whatever, some, something that happened and they bought it and didn't realize, so.
Didn't realize that there was a sanitary.
Then it's not buildable, that it was originally platted as a recreational lot, and then they come to us trying to get us septic site evaluation, and we go out and it's not buildable because it's too close to surface water. And so it's the same thing that's created by minor land divisions, but it was an old historical plat that was created as recreation. So I just, the same concern will exist anytime new lots are created where someone might be thinking it's buildable. If it's never been assessed for septic, you're going to have the same predicament. So, but again, the sanitary restriction lift is the only situation where we would be assessing that there is actually sewage and water, and that could be, that's even for plats that are not using septic or using municipal services. So we've had a bunch of issues in some areas in Bonner County that are municipal systems that were platted without Panhandle Health involved. So we, when it comes to municipal services, we aren't the ones assessing the septic and water, but we are the middleman between DEQ and the purveyors of these utilities. So we are essentially the only, when we are cut out of those municipal plats, no one else has any idea that they're happening, and so there's no way to verify that there's will serves and the bigger component in recent situations we're dealing with is that the infrastructure was never properly reviewed for the engineering. So I don't know if that just answered your question, but the, the, the recreational lots and having room for something, creating new land that's intended to be not buildable, I, you know, I potentially work something into that, but I'm not sure.
I personally think that we should have available people because not everyone's splitting the land to build.
Is it possible, Jake, or anybody else might know the answer to this? I thought I saw examples from other counties where they were able to attach to, you know, deeds, you know, land titles and deeds and whatnot, certain, call it documents, for lack of a better term, whereby if somebody had a piece of recreational property, the county could go in and say, okay, we won't require you to do this sanitary lift, but we're going to put a note, again, attached to your deed that says, hey, FYI, this is only for this purpose. That way, you know, it's perfectly clear to everybody, you know, the, the argument that, the concern generally comes up out here over and over when somebody else comes in and buys it. I know this is a buyer beware state, but that's really where the issue comes in. If somebody else comes in and buys it, they don't know what they don't know, and therefore they buy thinking they can do something, and they find out, well, no, I can't do this. But to get around the issue of allowing people to still just have recreational property, which I am totally in favor of, is it possible for us to say, look, across the board, you know, you're going to have to get a sanitary lift to be safe and sound and whatnot, but if it's purely recreational, we won't require that, but this is what we're going to do?
I think that'd be better to actually put on the face of the plat or have that sanitary restriction on the face of the plat.
Whatever, as long as it's recorded somewhere so that it's shown somewhere.
So the way that this code provision is written now, C, it says sewage disposal method for all building sites. So that would not include like utility lots or common lots, like HOA common area or beachfront home by an HOA.
Yeah, I know, but it says now, what could we do though, is my question.
That's what I'm getting at. So if it's not a building lot, it can be either a plat note or a deed restriction that says this is for expert business and should not be used or cannot be used for building purposes or cannot be developed for, you know, as a home size.
Got you.
Limited only to common open spaces.
Would that take care of everything we're talking about?
I think this code right there already, if you change this to, instead of may be provided, to shall be provided, it answers that same question because this is calling the building sites. So if it's not a building site, it's not required.
I think it's the may be provided that's part of the question.
I think that's where they were getting at, is change that to a shall.
Okay, yeah.
So then is that lift, would that require PhD to lift or require a lift of sanitary restrictions on every building lot? Or does that need to be written better or more, more specific?
So where, how would you guys analyze? I guess the question I, because it's your staff that would ultimately be looking at this, so like what, I'm not sure what document or like what that means exactly, because someone could look at it as being like a subject permit could be a, but if this is part of a land development process where we're not even talking about building yet, we're just talking about creating new land with the intention of hopefully making buildable lots, it really probably should be a sanitary lift, I would think.
We'll just pull the language from, from note 19 in chapter four then.
Yeah, I, I agree because otherwise sewage disposal method shall be provided. We don't, like I said, we got different systems popping up each year. I like the sanitary restriction lighter to better.
And ultimately, just so we're clear on this, this is a miss, you know, when we would go out and assess any type of land for a land development application to create a new, potentially, you know, the expectation will be buildable, that is, is also even from our world, a very preliminary assessment because we have no way, it gets down to the nitty gritty when someone comes in and now they tell us how many structures they want, how many bedrooms, and where they want everything. And so even at that point, even if we've assessed it at the front end for land development, they might not be able to get what they want on that parcel when they get to the point of subject permitting. But the point of this, again, is to at least know that there's some option. So we, we've, I've dealt with many plats in the past where they were limited, there was new parcels created, but that parcel would be limited to one dwelling with two bedrooms because that was all that the space had on the lot and little, you know, things like that. So I think the sanitary lift and then any particular notes that Panhandle Health identified through that process to be based on the face of the plat would go a long way, assuming that them people read the plats. But we would at least have the information out there on that, in that way, on the face of the plat.
So should that note also apply to family exemptions? Because right now it doesn't.
Should.
Family exemption?
Do you think it should require a sanitary restriction lift?
On family exemptions?
Yeah, why not?
Because a lot of times you don't give, you might have a grandparent who must give their grandchild.
Why are they giving it to them?
Because it's their state land.
True.
True state land.
But it's also so they can do something with it.
Sometimes. I, I, from my opinion, I think the family exemption, just go ahead and have a sanitary restriction based on it. But it's not a plat, right? It's not a plat, so how do you appropriate that?
So I'm, I'm sure you guys can do a speculative site evaluation on, on the property, right?
Then record it.
It would just be required in part of the supplemental or part of our review prior to approval, that they have some kind of documentation of those properties and parcels have. You can lift a, you can lift sanitary restrictions on a plat property. It's like you can with a plat property. It would give, it'd probably give recorded deeds or something.
One of the things about this that people don't realize is that what we are looking for, a huge component of all of this, is verifying that all of the existing land that we already created, the parent parcel, is not being compromised. So that is one thing that I, I have, there's a lot of misunderstanding about that. We would never want to create a new parcel that ultimately then compromises the original parent parcel, and now they don't have a compliance system, or like I said, the property line goes right through their system, or they don't have a replacement area, which is required in Idaho code for their septic. So that is the family split, whatever kind of split it is, that is the other, I guess, benefit of having Panhandle Health involved because we are thinking like that all the time. So whenever we show up, we're saying, okay, well, let's see what you want to do with this family split or whatever kind of split. Well, let's make sure that your first property you already have is okay and have a place for sewage. Then we can work on figuring out what you may or may not be able to do in terms of size even of parcels or whatever.
Could we come up with language instead of a family, let's say, family exemption, instead of requiring a sanitary restriction lift or a perk test? Because we've been talking about it for some time now, implement that in time of building location permit. I would think that would, that would pacify the concerns versus.
Except that you get the family exemption, you do the split, and then whoever takes the piece that's been split off never had that review, then they turn around, they sell it, new people come in, and then they go to try and start this process, and that's when they discover the problem. That's kind of what we've heard.
But that's also, I mean, we keep hearing this about building lots, and I'll be honest, it's, it's the public's job. It's a buyer beware state. You need to do your job. That's not our job to sit here and legislate all this stuff because people can't read, they don't want to do the research, they don't want to do their own thing. I don't think that with the family exemption, we need to go that far. Not all of them are going to be building lots. We're assuming that they're going to build on it. We're assuming we're giving it to them, but that might not be the purpose. I think the family exemption just is to be an exemption on its own, period, with all these other rules and regulations on it.
Yeah, I disagree respectfully. I hear what you're saying, but I would have to disagree because invariably, yeah, I would just disagree. I think if we're going to put protections in place, whether it's your grandson or Jim Bob that lives down the street or whoever, if you want to put protections in place, you put protections in place. We can figure out ways to take care of recreational properties if you think your grandson is just going to want a chunk of your land to dry camp on. But it's still up to the person that gets the land or buys the land to do the due diligence. That's not our job to legislate that out of them. We're not there to protect them. Buyer beware. You go to buy a house, you have to do your, your research. Well, and also, as Catherine was saying, there's no guarantees that they can build what they want to build. I think your preliminary evaluation ensures that something can be built of some size, but it doesn't guarantee that, you know, somebody's going to come in, be, be able to build it, build whatever it is that they want to build. So there's still something built that has to be done in all cases.
Jason Pippin's on there. He's, he works for the HAs.
Hi, Jason. Jason, I have something, he's muted right now. There he is.
Yeah, hi. I apologize for the meeting in person. Yeah, I just wanted to add a few things to this discussion if it, if it's helpful. Yeah, I just wanted to add a few things to this discussion if it, if it's helpful. One, in relation to the recreational subdivisions, you know, those are in areas that building is prohibited, you know, because of floodplain regulations and so forth. So those are not intended to be ever, you know, built on. So that's all kind of captured in the plat. It's also, you know, very clearly described in the Benowah County subdivision ordinance. And then in the, on the family split, you know, for the, for the same reasons as we would evaluating a new subdivision, we essentially just use, and Jake mentioned, in the site evaluation application. And really what we're doing is just establishing base suitability. And we do it in a way where, you know, we have the applicant submit a site evaluation application. We're just reviewing the site for suitability of septic in general. And then, you know, that's what the requirement is, is just that, from the county standpoint, is just acknowledgement or just a, you know, a report from us stating that, you know, that area is suitable. And then the fees from that process go towards a septic per installation permit for one of the residences. So in that process, it also does not involve lifting of sanitary restrictions because it's not a plat, if that's helpful.
So there's, there's, I'm looking at the coupine, family exemption, and they have a section that says, "An acknowledgement by Panhandle Health District indicating that a location on the subject property or on a nearby property by easement has been identified and approved that can meet the waste water disposal requirements for the parcel in question."
Yes, yeah, and that, that's in lieu of lifting of the sanitary restrictions.
Okay. Good job on them putting the easement part in it, because we do have a lot of easements that.
Maybe we can.
Yes.
To our. You said that was Benowah? Cootenay or Cootine?
Cootine, and then, and then we're following the same process in Benowah County. And I apologize, I almost complete with a summary of all of the counties in Idaho and just, you know, looking at it from the agency review requirement lens. And I'd like to get that to you, sample code language from every county, but then also the specific, some of those specific ordinances in Benowah and Cootine. So, that's the approach that we're currently doing in Benowah County. We, you know, we're working on one today with our environmental health specialist. And, you know, we're essentially just reviewing the parcels within that split just at a very cursory level to establish, just to verify that there's suitability. And part of the reason that Catherine mentioned is so that if easements would be necessary to make those parcels buildable, then we can identify that upfront and try to work, you know, work towards all the future lots being buildable down the road.
Yeah, great, thank you. All right, so maybe we'll take a look at the other code sections from the other counties. Now this one, Cootine, so maybe incorporate that. Also note that they did that kind of odd thing there. Maybe it's ways, they list exempt divisions of land. I think there should be a separate section for family exemptions and then another section for exceptions like cemetery lots, all that stuff, leases. And I note that they have a five-year transfer restriction. Cootine, unless, and if you don't, then you can't build on it.
What kind of restriction could you call that?
Transfer restriction. Five-year limitation.
More or less if you, we would have to regulate that sort of.
Well, Matt was saying, if we're going to put anything like that in there, like that bills.
Yeah.
Really not, because I'm not sure that's.
It says that if Alan creates a lot and gives it to Eric, that's his son, that if Eric tries to turn around and sell it to me, a friend, then if it's been three years, I can't build on it for another two. So it's like a five-year clock for when it's created. Regardless of in the transfer's hands, it's unbuildable if it transfers hands.
Other than to the original.
Other than to the original. That's the way I understand that.
That's what it says, yeah. But I'd like to reflect in the intent.
Bill's interpretation of that.
Bills, bills, plus that that's.
We'd have to essentially like flag every one of those parcel creations with a red flag on our system for building. Go back and look at deeds and say, okay, who's owned it in the last five years? Can we allow that, you know, six hundred square foot chicken coop?
You still have the issue where Eric could build on it, so.
Even then, oh yes, you're right. Then the next guy just couldn't build a shop or an ADU or something, five years ago.
Right.
All right. Anything else for the subject? All right, so what's the next? I think we already talked about that, because we've had the two hearings.
We actually have one more agenda. Yeah, the other, chapter one and chapter two revisions, they're in there.
Chapter one and two, 12?
Correct.
Where would we find such a beast?
So, in your, under today's meeting date, you have a packet that was put together that had all of the information. It's the same one that's on the county website. So, I'll give you a quick rundown of this. We were done with the email stuff, right?
I haven't done it yet. Is it the same packet that you used to test your emails a week ago?
Yep, it's probably in the bottom third of that.
Right back to that?
I'm still not tracking it, sir.
Oh, not, I've done it. Oh, preparation.
You go to agendas, minutes and packets. You find today's date. It's down there. You have a bunch of public comments about this meeting as well.
The planning commission meeting packet?
Correct.
Okay.
So go until you find appendix A, which is just.
Oh yes.
Summary proposed title 12 updates.
You should have said that to begin with, right?
So, this has been, all these title 12 changes where I find discrepancies throughout the code, or find some other minor adjustments that need to be made. I always workshop these with the board, so I don't remember when I first presented this to you. I want to say it was probably a month and a half ago. And from there, we scheduled a workshop with the board, which took probably three hours. And then they reviewed, maybe two hours, and then reviewed all of these sections. And then we did one more review of this at the last update meeting earlier this month. From there, they wanted me to present it to you guys at workshop and see what changes need to be made before we schedule for color here. So, the crux of this is clarifying some changes to, or not really changes, clarifying that the planning commission holds quasi judicial hearings for common plan map amendment applications. Yeah, that's, I think, it could be argued that they're quasi judicial, because it's a, it's a single land owner providing an application on a piece of property. So, we have deemed them as legislative, and I think this clarifies that process. So, the next change would be zoning commission. It would remove the zoning commission's ability to appoint a hearing examiner. That comes out of state statute under zoning commission and hearing examiner. So, the board decided, they didn't, they didn't like the fact that zoning commission could kind of go around their authority, if you will. Legal weighed in on whether or not this could be removed from their ability, given that it is branch into them in statute. Legal interpretation was that because, should I draw more? Because the board appoints the zoning commission, they can limit the jurisdiction of the zoning commission, including their ability to appoint a hearing examiner. So, this really clarifies that it's only the board that can appoint a hearing. There's another minor change to 12-1 through 1. This is just violations, so that it requires a violation complaint or a complaint to be on a form provided by the county. We have people argue that they don't want to fill out a form when complaining to us about it. Specifically, these are verbal. It's really hard to create a record on a verbal complaint from someone and oftentimes not even willing to give us their name. So that, what's that?
That sounds good to me.
And then the, the big change behind all of this is the noticing procedures. So, you'll see this in 12-214, 217, 224, 235, and 247. And all of these are proposed to reference over to 12-268, which is the noticing procedures. It was one of those copy case scenarios where you had some different standards throughout, and then 12-268, reference to a state statute. So some of these land, or some of these land use actions require certain noticing standards or could be argued one versus another the way it's currently written. So it's really clarifying that process. You look at the changes proposed in 12-268. The board is recommending that we call back to state statute under 6509 and 6511, and then add an additional 15 days to that notice. So currently, state statute requires a 15-day notice. So we do a 15-day notice plus an additional 15 days. This is the notice to agencies and to the agents. And this is the, the notice in the papers. So it'd be a 30-day notice versus. That's, like I said, that's probably the most substantial change, this other one throughout. Some changes, clarifications in the variance definition, aligning it with our current code rather than state statute. State statute calls towards bulk and height. I think we're proposing to remove those, because we don't, we don't, we don't limit the height of structures. I have to go back and. Administrative variances, the board thought that 30% administrative variance was too excessive, so they recommended to go to 20%, which was something out of the last workshop. And then again, the calling 12-238, the administrative variance. Again, that's, that's a variance that's approved and processed by staff that doesn't go to the zoning commissioner, hearing examiner. But that would change the noticing standards to the new 12-268 standards, which we have.
What about the, you just think that's all specific, mainly a great use table?
I'm getting there. I'm going down the list. Some other minor changes, the special use permits, talking about what's hearing body, administrative appeals, timeframe for appeal. And then clarifying the appeal to the final decision. Expands some sort of procedural framework for appealing a final decision to the zoning commissioner, hearing examiner. This talks about where there's a lack of a majority vote or a tie vote at the board level, which now has happened. So what happens when it's a tie vote and you have an underlying decision of approval or denial, and it gets appealed to the board and you have a tie vote, or you have two abstentions and now we can't make a ruling? So it becomes like a judicial headache when it gets appealed to court if the board hasn't made a final determination. So this just clarifies that the underlying decision is now the board's decision. That's what's appealed on the basis of that judicial. Same thing with the reconsideration of 12-263. And then that 12-268. So, the other thing that this adds is a framework for which, I have his spreadsheet or his diagram that Mr. Gompf used. So, it's expanding the 300-foot radius based on the subject property zone. So.
Table B1.
I'll jump right to that, because this table is really what does it. So it says, what he was, I think what he was attempting to do is, if you're looking at the higher density zones, you look at 300 feet, what's the average number of total properties within that 300 feet? So if you take that same zone, or if you take that same idea and create like a grid of five acres and 10 acres and 20 acres, 40, how far do you have to expand to reach the same number of people? That was his, his idea, so I'll get there. So as you expand out, you're hitting the same number of folks on average. And of course, we don't have a grid throughout a whole county, right? And you're going to have zoning districts that abud, so some of these are going to incorporate other larger areas. So, that was, that's how this was brought up and that's how it was crafted, so. I have the, I can, you know, you want to run it. On my desk, there's a piece of paper with like a bunch of grid lines on it. It's like underneath my background here. I meant to scan that clue from back and I just forgot.
I don't see how this makes much sense. I mean, basically 300 feet are the boundaries of property. We're trying to affect the parcels. So if you've got these large parcel areas, you know, you're not trying to.
The idea is not to get the same number, is to get affected parcels.
So this doesn't make any sense.
Myst analysis showed that if I use the same ratio, you're getting to that many parcels, because there are a few parcels. You're not going to have as many adjacent at 300 feet as you are. And I think this is.
I'm thinking of the, of the Ag Forest designation. So, next to an area of impact, do you have to mail those out? Or can you go ahead and just put it in the newspaper at that point?
That's where we called back to 6511, so if you have more than 200 people, then you.
Just put it in the newspaper.
That's where if you have, I'm thinking if you had like a forest 40 up against Alpin Village or up against, you know, some other high density segal area or something, and you grab 2,800 feet, and all of a sudden you're at 460 people, or something along those lines.
Just to the east of the Pacific Tracks, Elbira. And all that stuff to the west, that's going to be hundreds and hundreds of lots. So. Analysis.
Question? In accordance with the provisions of, and according to the applicable area of impact, what does that really mean? Isn't that going to change from, say, Cootine to Fandray to Sandpoint? I don't quite understand what that's intended to mean, according to the applicable area of impact agreement.
Sure, so every city has an, has an agreement.
Right.
And the noticing standards, how long they have, each one of those happens to be right now, a 40-day notice to that city. So, we're going through the area of impact hearings here in a few weeks with the board. If some city argues that they need a 90-day review window, then the, then the time clock for that's going to be 90 days for that specific problem.
Okay, all right. We hit on this in the other meeting, but why not just stick with the county's rules? That's, that's a question. It seems to me like it would be more reasonable if you're living in the county to go by the county rules. And I was going to address the radius thing. I, I went, and just because I was, I've always wanted this 300-foot thing to change, because it makes no sense in AF 20. I mean, driveways are three times that way.
Don't remove your driveways from the profit down?
I understand that, I'm just making a relative statement, that halfway up somebody's driveway is not even, 300 feet doesn't even get you up somebody, your neighbor's driveway. I did, just as an experiment, I went in GIS into Sandpoint, because this is, these things are written for urban areas. And I did a 300-foot shape and counted up how many parcels it was. And it was 45 or 47. And then I went out into the Ag 4, Ag 10. And it's, it's random, because you can have a lot of non-conforming lots in AF 10 or 20, but I just kind of plotted down here and there and just experimented to see in those areas, how far would you have to go to get 45 parcels? And that's, and then I. Well, it may not make sense to you, but that's what I did and I thought it made a lot of sense.
Well, you're not, it's not, you're not, it's not a numerical situation. I mean, you're not trying to say you have to notice this many people. You're supposed to notice affected parcels.
Well, somebody came up with an idea that 300-foot radius would affect 45 parcels, and I thought that was pretty smart. So, you may not agree with them either, but that's what. Well, that's Lupa.
It's in, it's in the state.
It's in Lupa. So, I, there's a lot of stuff in Lupa I don't agree with either, but somehow or other that became a standard, and so I thought, well.
Plus it says, you think, you think that our radius is 2,800 feet?
Yeah, for this, sure.
How many parcels would that get in AF 20?
I don't know, you can find out on GIS.
A lot more than.
Well, it's, you doubt that it would be.
No, maybe not, it very well may not. If it's, you know, I, I, I was part of a group. I was updating Tony when we recommended making these larger about four or five years ago, and the U.S.C.C. didn't agree with us. But, but, I forget, was it 1,500 feet?
No, I don't think it was that much.
It was something we recommended to change. But, but, you know, 1,400 feet barely gets from one side of my property to the other.
And what's a downside?
So it may get the neighbors on either side, and that's it. Depending on, you know, the shape of your property.
How many parcels do you have around you? Eight? Six?
Well.
I mean, it's not from the middle of your property, it's from the.
The boundaries. I'm in a little bit of a unique situation because I have 625 acres of B L M land north of me.
What's the downside if a few people get noticed? That maybe you could, and the question came up in the workshop with B O C C, what does it cost? And if I'm not mistaken, the director said about a dollar, if you mail them, a dollar a piece. So we're talking about, you know, okay, $45 maybe. Is that really something to quibble over in the interest of being transparent with neighbors and potentially affect the parties? I don't think it is.
You know, I think with the, the thing is, with the rural areas, even though you look at 2,800 feet...
Wow.
But other than those edge cases where you have a rural area that's up against an alpine or up against some other denser area, or as Dave mentioned, some areas where maybe there's non-conforming parcels, I don't think it's going to hit a huge number of parcels if you're talking about 10, 20, typical 10, 5, 10, 20.
There is one right in the middle of Selly Valley, on Selly Road. That hit 70.
At what radius?
At 2,800 feet.
And were there non-conforming lots there?
I just picked a random corner in the middle of Selly Valley. It hit 70 parcels.
Is that what the charging, the planning charges is a dollar per letter that comes in out?
No, that's, that's a, it's anecdotal. I don't know exactly the cost. But you'd look at a stamp at 57 cents, you look at a piece of paper, you look at, you know, an envelope at, you know, 14 cents or 12 cents, whatever the cost, and staff time to stuff that envelope and get it in. So I think we print all of the, all the, so roughly, when you look at it, it's about a dollar per envelope going out the door. Maybe a dollar 10, depending on who's doing it, the cost of the... That's, when I look at the cost of these...
Who's responsible for getting, having all the...
We do just this. We download a spreadsheet, that spreadsheet gets, we take that and put it onto a, we use Excel into a mailer and a mail merge, and then we print it onto envelopes, and we put a stack of envelopes. By way, I mean my staff, I love you, this is an admin task, right? So they prepare all the mailers. The planners create the mailing list and the admin stuff.
So what's our, what's our role here? I mean, if this has already been reviewed twice by the B O C C, what do we do? Why, what's the point?
It's your purview to draft my recommendations or draft by one of the commissioners.
And you know, at the end of the day...
Better for hearing.
At the end of the day, it's kind of like, you touched on Alan, I mean, should be properties noticed that are affected. Well, okay, well, certain areas, it'd be nobody neighbor-wise, but everybody that lives on the same private road may be five miles...
I was going to use exactly that example because that would apply in my case, for sure. I live on a private road, and you have to go a mile to get to, from where I live to get to the end of the private road.
Or somebody else has none of those issues, and nobody lives around them, but they live on such a steep slope that they're set, they're just going to run five miles down the road and impact somebody down there.
Well, it's always been, what, 300 feet? I'm affected by this, I'm 301 feet, and I didn't get noticed. Always been a problem.
Yeah.
Probably their neighbors. They probably don't know. All right, so what are we doing here? Why don't we just send this for hearing?
It's just, if there's any other, any other suggestions or, you know, the board's not infallible, right? I'm sure they've reviewed this a couple of times, but I think you guys have written more code than they have, so I think it's pertinent for you to review this and say, did we miss anything? I think you have a reg.
Oh, yeah, so we have a reg. Do you want to add something?
Hello, you have to unmute. Am I muted?
Yeah.
Okay. Reg Crawford again, Bonner County. I'm sorry, but I was concentrating on the M L D stuff and missed these Title 12 changes, so I didn't get to submit comments during the B O C C hearing. Thank you for the opportunity. As for 12-238, for administrative variances, I support the reduction to 20%, and I'd like to actually see it go less. To point out once again, the administrative approval process is fraught with problems. I've seen applications that lie outside the authority granted. I've seen application, one application where someone asked for a 30% increase in square feet for an ADU simply because they wanted more room. I saw variants be filed as administrative that asked for like a 20 or 30 percentage on every setback, meaning they were combining multiple administrative variances as one, which should have gone to a hearing. I've seen a shoreline setback that was filed as administrative, but they didn't see the percentage eligible. And again, we're looking at a culture of approval. I'm grateful these are now online for people to view, but I'd also like to see notification or posting on the website by address so affected neighbors could be aware. As for 12-261, the appeals practice, back when the Woodview neighbors were contesting an M L D that was using the shared wells urban water scheme, we sent the file to an attorney for review. Other than his response saying, quote, "Big yikes all around," unquote, he noted that the county appeal process, quote, "amits the erroneous interpretation of law," unquote, vector, which means that seems to be the case with deciding that a shared wells urban water. Being able to argue misinterpretation of the law as opposed to actual findings or actual, factual findings is one of the only ways to be successful in the appeal. So by omitting this, the county, the county is kind of stacking the deck. And what we've seen is that between these, when these administrative processes are up for appeal, it puts the onus and especially the financial burden on those who are affected by it and the neighbors who can't fight by going to court. So I would like to see the erroneous interpretation of law vector be added to the reasons for appeal. Thank you.
When she said erroneous reasons for appeal, do not we require kind of a narrow claim on what's being appealed versus a blanket blanket claim now?
So appeals of a final decision, the zoning commissioner hearing examiner has a list of notice of appeal contents. You'll see it on the screen there, C1, you know, 1 through 5.
Right.
That was, that list was provided and drafted by a legal counsel. That list is not contained in the administrative appeal. So it's specific to the final decision of the hearing examiner.
Okay. Again, administrative appeals, I'd like to say when Director Gabel mentioned that they, I forget what he said, they can be filed under Chapter 2, they're still problematic because, again, for any administrative approval process, the people who might want to appeal it, they are not notified of the date that this is approved. Therefore, they can miss, easily miss that window of approval. Furthermore, with the interpretation that's been going at the county, in the case, again, of the Woodview neighbors, they filed an appeal, and the code states that an appeal hearing must be scheduled within 10 days. And the county has interpreted this to mean it must be heard in 10 days rather than scheduled in 10 days. In their case, and in many cases, the county takes 10 days or more to fill a public records request. And so the citizens didn't even have their public records requests filled in time for an appeal. So the appeal process is fraught with, fraught with the interpretation of the code because it doesn't give the citizens the opportunity to appeal in a timely manner and to have the factual evidence they need to create, to be heard. And again, as Susan pointed out earlier, the next step to appeal is the M T R on the administrative approval process. And from M L Ds, of course, the, they're saying there is no such path to judicial review. And so I think the county has been stacking the deck, like I said, and that the erroneous interpretation of law should be added to the administrative appeal code. Thank you.
Susan Drumheller, Segal, Idaho. Yeah, I wanted to also, I wanted to agree with Reg on that, and I understand that this erroneous interpretation of the law is one of the reasons you can appeal, you know, one of the basis, possible bases of an appeal in other counties, for instance, Goodney County. And also, I wanted to point out, when I read through there, the thing that jumped out at me was that 10-day issue again, and that's what caught us up with the M T Rs. I was going to suggest maybe putting in there that 10 days perhaps could start from when the commissioners approve it. Because at least then it's something that is in the public realm, and that might help as well. Also providing, you know, more, you know, other transparency to when those decisions are made and what they are, would be helpful. So I just wanted to underscore what Reg said.
So now, if we get rid of the M L D process, we have a short plat, we've got to have a notice going out at the application that filed, right? So is there also a notice that goes out that a decision's been made? Or the decision has been made, approval has been made?
I think the code right now, it gives a 30-day time. I think we have to submit a notice to the neighbors and to the agencies, 30 days for write comment, then 10 days to craft up and make a decision. And then after the 10 days, then a decision is made and placed on the county website.
Is there any notice that goes out that a decision's been made? Or when the decision is?
No. But it's the same thing on, take a decision by the hearing examiner. She has five days by statute to go and make, or to craft up her decision. We don't then send a mail out to everyone that we notified at the beginning with what the decision was. We post on the website, other current projects is this decision. And it goes along with how we process other decisions. But the 10-day window here, administrative appeals are any administrative decision. So it could be administrative variance, it could be an approval of a stormwater plat. It could be, we make a ton of different types of administrative decisions. I would say a building location permit is administrative decision, but there's an appeal process under Title 11. So I think it's really similar to this, if I remember right.
What's your appeal process under Title 11?
I'd have to look, I don't recall. We've only had a couple of building location permit appeals. And it's been some time since we've had one.
So how, so let's say, okay, this is a P P short plat, or the decision may have been administered by, okay, it still has to vote forward.
The final plat of the board.
Final plat, so does it have time to appeal one from the administrative approval or from the plat?
So there's, there's two ways to look at it. The way that legal councils reviewed that is somebody could request a reconsideration of the board's final decision of the final plat. They could also appeal the administrative decision to a preliminary approval plat. They could approve, they could essentially appeal either side of it.
How do they know what the administrative approval was?
They'd have to, so they would have gotten a notice from us, just like anybody on any other lay of these action, that something's, a decision's going to be made. So I don't, do we tell them what the approval or what the timeline is, like the 30-day and the 10-day in that notice?
I'd have to look.
Really, always get posted on the Cal website?
Every single short plat, along with that there, every other hearing file.
Is that codified anywhere, or is that just the procedure you guys are currently following?
I don't know if it's codified. So the way we look at it, like, we're required to provide the information to the agencies. So rather than print off the entire application and submit it to every agency, we give them the access of where to find all the websites. So part of that is to cut down on the burden of printing and mailing. That's why we've always done the...
No, I think it's a great, I'm just playing devil's advocate, somebody else could argue that, gee, well, your replacement comes in, when Alex finally kills you and he takes over and he's evil Alex, he could decide, you know what, I'm not going to post them until nine days after I make my decision, and therefore you've missed the hearing window, for example. So I just was curious to know if your good process is written down in there.
I don't have the short plat code coming in there, so we have to review that or I have to look at it. We can, we can definitely propose some changes to that by the next...
I would also like to mention that it did happen where, I think it says there is an option, like the neighbors can request an appeal for a short plat, but in the case of the Whiskey Jack community, they did request a hearing, and it was denied, and they were forced to pay the fee.
Well, that issue is probably going to be resolved if everything...
Short plat is under Lupa.
Well, no, it's the administrative approval process.
So the interpretation on 10 days, so within 10 working days, a receipt of the appeal of applying an examiner shall schedule a meeting with the board to hear the appeal. So there's two ways to interpret that. You actually schedule it, but then have what duration, you know, when, when do we have to have that meeting by?
I would think, I think it would be good to argue when they can get their public records requests completed and have their information. So if the county, like right now, I have one going on 23 days. So I think scheduling within 10 days and giving them a month would be sufficient, but it could be included in there that if any public records requests are submitted, it has to be after that date.
So as written here, that's exactly what we're adding. The meeting shall be held within 30 calendar days of receipt. So it clarifies, legal has given us the interpretation, it could be, it could be reviewed either direction, right? You either have to hold the meeting within 10 days or schedule it within 10 days. But, you know, what's the expectation from the person appealing? What timeframe do we have to hold this meeting within? Nothing in code, so we're going to schedule for January 5th to 27th. That's not reasonable. So there has to be some reasonable argument. So when we, we may do this with the board, and as we talk about it internally, 30 days, you know, schedule that meeting to be held within 30 days, gives an expectation to someone appealing at when their, when their appeal is going to be held in front of the board.
But 30 days could be five. But 30 days could be five.
Excuse me again, there was a case out in, oh, I can't remember what bay it was, but it was four owners who were applying for M L Ds, and they lived out of state, and the county put their appeal on, within like five days, and they couldn't fly to Sandpoint and be present for the hearing because of the short notice.
All right, well, let's look at that.
So is, so within 30 days, to answer your question, the board's schedule is difficult at best. So I've been trying to schedule meetings for the area of impact hearings, and especially this time of year when they go into board equalization with B O Es, and they're getting all the appeals from assessment, and then right after that, they go into budget, and they're doing budget now. Their, their meetings get stacked, and finding at least even just an hour sometimes is difficult in a certain timeframe. So giving a 30-day window, you could put a, you know, sooner than 10 days and no later than 30, no later than 45. But give a window, I think, helps because you don't want to say on the 28th day, you know, or the 30th day, a hearing will be made.
No, I'm looking for a window. I'm just, I'm just hearing the comment that it's difficult for, you know, they can be scheduled so soon that people would be difficult really being prepared, given the dependency on other things that the county needs to do to allow people to be at a level prepared with it, so.
I think we should propose a window.
Yeah.
So what, what's the no sooner than, no later than, 15 to 45 days or 15 to 30?
Say 15 to 45.
Okay.
So Jake, are you guys going to have enough time? I think this is all, it's pretty well settled, we're talking about, regarding to the family exemptions, rewriting up some of that code. Can you have that done by the third? And get it to us in advance with the third?
I want to say yes. There's a, within two weeks from today, we have most of that code language already crafted, so.
I would suggest you look at, do they have that?
They have some decent stuff in their code. That's why I had to grab it and put it in your guys' files, so I like a little bit of...
I like the way they, it kind of combines the exemption. Oh, I know.
Give me by the end of Friday, and I can give you a more definite answer. We can tentatively add it to the county agenda now, and then give me through the end of the week to see how much time I can go to that. And I can pull another staff member, tell them you're, where you have a lot more applications to process, so delegating some of these tasks.
Related to that, sorry to interrupt you, but how's Bill 180? There was some talk at one point with B O C C about them sending it back to this commission to work it and it being the highest priority because it takes effect July 1. it being the highest priority, because it takes effect July 1. Is that still likely to come back and get dumped in our laps, or where's that at?
It's scheduled for a workshop with the board. I wanna say it's the 9th or 10th, if I remember right, of June. That's as soon as I can get it in front of them. That tells you how busy we're scheduled. And at the last update meeting, they said they would take that upon them. They wanted to do an initial review of that. I need to work with Mr. Donkey, it's coming up, at least, some kind of baseline draft. And then Bill just provided a legal analysis of that, I wanna say, last week. I haven't read it many years lately, last week, so I think he's a better report. Yeah, there's a lot to that bill. There's likely some changes we need to make throughout, or throughout, on the time of the year. But there was a...
So Bill, you have a ready bill?
I have it, I browsed through it, but I've been working on my department budget for the last two days, so I have nothing but budget numbers in my head right now.
I'm not sure that people are reading that bill currently.
I can ask Bill if I can send it over to you guys and take a look at it.
Well, I'm not having a little opinion, but I just think if you read the second section, which is putting it on the polls, I think he...
He mentioned something about the conflicting language throughout that, that the, it kind of references this, but then the other kind of in some sense, so.
But if you read the last line of the polls section, that's what the legislature's saying we need to deal with. If I don't think it's a blanket, you have to allow... So powers on existing features. I don't think it says that. Oh, okay. What do I know?
Do you guys have any other changes to this draft code you wanna look at? This was...
Do we?
Initially, this had some change, had some language for, I think Mr. Roman mentioned this, had some language that would limit the scope of appeal when going to the board to appeal itself, so the board couldn't, it's on a de novo hearing to the board. And given the new state case law from January, we're already, we're still reacting to the whole reasons statements requirement of state statutes, so rather than put another layer of complexity on the board's decision-making process, we better let's shelf that for now and come back in maybe nine months or a year and see where we're at on the reasons statements, and if we wanna try to incorporate this other type of changes.
Code down with a de novo review?
A de novo review.
It is? That was a decision back in...
Yeah, there was a P and Z that the board didn't agree with, from my understanding on how that changed. The board didn't want the planning and zoning to... They didn't want their scope of review to be limited. But I went back and looked at that code, it's been really similar to how it's worded now since 2008, some minor changes, but I think it's been de novo since then. Bill told me that other stuff, and I don't know if it's correct.
It had a timeframe too, because there was a case that went back and forth, back and forth. They ended it, flipped the blame, it was all right, and went back, they did like it, they abandoned it, and were doing it in a timely manner. And that was a lot of it too, so. So they just said, okay, just pass it on to this de novo hearing, it's filed, it's not a recognition.
All right, I'll make that one edit to this, and I'll probably clarify some of the summary, it looks like some of that is where it's still in there, and I'll be worried a little bit more. Maybe that's gonna be free for you, probably next time. Back up, there's some other stuff in the short plaque code when looking at this that we should probably address. It has the same two-year clause that the MLD code has. I think that needs to be removed and probably adopt some of the language that we have drafted and one of those other options in there. There's also the question on the subdivision code of, do we want to continue to allow the zoning commission to only make a recommendation to the board? Right now, the zoning commission doesn't have the authority to approve preliminary plats, it doesn't reference the hearing examiner, so there's like a discrepancy between Chapter 6 and Chapter 2.
We're referring to plats.
Subdivisions, yeah.
Because I thought, State Statuary 7, it has to be the hearing examiner or zoning commission.
No, State Statuary says you can grant that jurisdiction, or that authority, to the hearing examiner and the zoning commission, but our code in Chapter 6 says the zoning commission can make only a recommendation to the board. I've been arguing this with Bill for a while now, and we finally came to the agreement that the code conflicts with itself, so rather than send subdivision files to the hearing examiner, let's send all of them to the zoning commission and then fix the code. So if we're in Chapter 6, I think we need to revisit that. I'm not suggesting a change, at least clarify if it's the hearing examiner and zoning commission, so that we can clarify like our process of it. Now, if in your review, you decide that those two bodies are still appropriate, Chapter 2 and LUPA says that they can make decisions on preliminary paths, then our subdivision files, then it might make sense to change the code to align that. Or if you want to continue to only allow them to make recommendations, add hearing examiner to that list. Or, sorry, to that code section subdivision. I'll draft up those two codes and, or that could change for that.
When is it appealed, when is it appealed? Appealable on our, appealable on what, the plaque?
That's debatable too, because it's the final decision of the board, so what's the final decision? Is that the final decision of the final plaque, or is it the final decision of the preliminary plaque? So I think it's both.
You guys address that, I would think it's probably both.
Yeah, that's what Bill has aired on the side of caution, we've never argued that a final plaque could be appealed via LUPA. I don't know if we've had a subdivision final plaque appealed to judicial review.
Supposed to be.
Statute says that the board cannot delegate, so the state statute can't delegate final approval of subdivisions to a hearing party. So that's why all plaques have to go to the board, all the final plaques. So we do either consent agenda, we propose, or we had a short plaque this morning that was presented to the board, so all final plaques always come to the board, so.
It doesn't have to be a hearing?
It's not a hearing, no.
Yeah, just like they do with the MLPs.
And that's why MLP plaques still come to the board. It's been argued whether or not that needs to happen, but we've always aired on that side of caution. So I'll craft up those changes, let me see how this looks by the Friday, and then I'll shoot it to you guys on the email. I'll probably highlight and just put notes on some other sections to review rather than make recommendations, where I see some conflicts between Chapter 6 and Chapter 7.
So what are you gonna do? Like, highlight the changes, or?
I'll highlight the code sections and then reference the conflict that I see, and how you guys wanna address it.
Okay.
If that works for you.
Are you gonna give the suggested changes?
Yes, I can give you some suggestive changes. I'll give you two options, I'm like...
I'm free.
Can't delete the subdivision code, so.
Okay, so that it for your third?
I am working on a draft of a venue, wedding venue code, so that will be a little of our free time. So we'll have to come up with that sometime sooner than later.
A burning issue?
Yes. It's, I think it's long overdue. We've approved, or we've processed a number of event venue and wedding venues over the last five years. It's become a fairly hot topic, and there's a lot of interest in that in our county, and it doesn't seem that that's a statewide thing, so I found some good codes from the East Coast. There's not, I even looked through West Coast, Oregon, Washington, California, there's not a whole lot of codes in this area for event venues. I found one in Massachusetts and one in Florida, I'd love to look at for references. So let me come up with a draft of that, and then I'll do it to you guys, so. Something that we'll throw on another news to start workshop.
So not to pile on here, but there's a lot of alterations, a lot of conditions that need to be made to the code based on... So we have to wait for the board to do whatever they're gonna do, but...
So they're hearing this next week, it's the 20th, so.
One time.
One for the April 8th. I don't know if we're up here or if we're downstairs, it's probably downstairs.
The election's over.
The election will be over, yeah, so I think we're back there.
We hope.
Do you need to agendize that in case we have a quorum of us there? Yeah, I mean, it is our obligation.
Yeah, we should decide that.
You're not just, that's a good expression, it's not your decision to be made, so.
No, but we're, we're the applicant.
Yeah, we're the, we talked about that last two weeks ago.
Yeah.
We can re-buttling everything.
I don't know how to address that, because...
But you have to support my decision.
Oh, we'll see.
Because you voted for it.
I don't wanna make it a joint meeting, because it almost seems like you're the decision maker, which I'm not, the board is, so. I will figure out how to add that on the agenda. Maybe always add a note, a quorum of the planning commission meeting presentation to discuss the project.
If in fact we have a quorum.
I guess it may be present. Okay.